Okay, good evening. We'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. We'll start with agenda adjustments. Do you have any at all on your end?
Yes, I have one. I'm deliberations. I just want to discuss the recording secretary's salary, like we did at the SAU and go over that and see if the board will take a motion to make that adjustment.
Very good, thanks. Okay, additionally, like we did last meeting, I'd just like to put policy BEDH up for the board here. This has been in the review cycle. I would like to propose that we do again abide by it since we're starting to review it for public input. Is there any comment to that? Take a vote then? Okay, all those in favor?
Motioning.
I'm sorry. I think I'm motioning as such.
To me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the point of order there. All those in favor, four to zero, and Allison will be late, so that's an abstention there. So with that, like last meeting, that will mean three minutes for public input per person. Okay, we'll move to correspondence, resignations, and nominations.
Yes, I have a series of correspondence that I provided the board. First, I provided you with the NASDAQ enrollment numbers. We'll be starting to look at those in November once we move to the budget season. Also, as you know, at the SAU board, we discussed a proposed communications and compliance specialist. I passed out a draft of what the job description would look like. I am looking for feedback, so we'll take that in November as well and prepare us for the SAU meeting in December. Also, I wanted to provide the board a couple pieces of communication that I have shared with the planning board. They had followed up to our memo last spring and asked for some clarification, so I provided you with the October 21st memo where I just gave them an update of what was taking place with the facilities committee. And then I emailed Alan Rosenberg today because Alan also chairs the capital improvements plan for Brookline. And when we filed the capital improvement plan in August, which we do every year, we were still in the midst of the facilities discussions. So he had asked if we could just provide him clarification so he could add that to the capital improvement plan for the planning board, so that has been done. And then lastly, the major communication was the in-your-board packet I had sent out. As I told you last month, I've been tracking different samples of COVID data. And when we hit about the middle of the month, the 13th, 14th, 18th, through that time period, Dan, Tricia, and I started to actually have discussions about potentially how could we look at maybe starting to move to longer mask breaks or more frequent mask breaks. And then like COVID does, in a very quick turnaround, by the 19th, we had seen a spike from about 18 cases to 28. And then this week, our numbers for the first time hitting the 30s between the two towns. And I always look at the two towns because we share so many services together, sports activities, high school obviously is both towns, and siblings. So on the beginning of this week, we hit our high in quite some time of 34 with 18 confirmed cases in Brookline and 16 in the Hollis community. I do tend to believe that those numbers will start to go down again, which is seems to be the trend. We go through a period of a quick spike and then they start to move down. I also wanted to share with the Brookline board what a cluster is because that went out to families regarding a situation at the high school. And a cluster is simply three individuals that have some common piece. So let's say Tricia, Dan, and I were all out hanging out as friends and the three of us got COVID. When we file that data with DHHS, that's going to come back as a cluster because we're going to name each other as close contacts. In the cases we had, we were very familiar with the individuals involved. It was not what I'll call a surprise, but if you get two clusters at the same time, that's considered an outbreak. And the Department of Health and Human Services had recommended if we were to get to an outbreak, then we would do a mask mandate for a two-week period to again let that number come down. We didn't have to do that at the high school. Those numbers came down. And right now, our numbers from a school point of view continuing to start to dwindle again. So we monitor it closely. We were excited to hear the news that there'll be the potential for a vaccine coming out. It's not our intent to mandate a vaccine, but I know many, many families that are very interested in getting that. I have been asked a question about doing some sort of clinic for the vaccine. All the health professionals that I've talked to have recommend that they believe it would be better for children of that age to go to their own pediatrician. Now, for some reason, it became a huge backlog and we were asked to consider something like that. We would most definitely do that for any family who wanted that to happen. And I think working with Tricia and Dan, we'll continue to monitor the numbers. Once we start to see the vaccines implemented, then we can start to make some decisions regarding what direction we're going in. And I'd be happy to take any questions on that memo from the board. And the last piece I just want to communicate with you, just so you're aware, I think Dan and Tricia would confirm, we've kind of seen a spike in behavior instances, a little more pushing and chuffing in routes housing than we typically see. And for some of our students, this is a major adjustment coming back to school. You know, many of them had been out for the entire year in remote. It's not something that we don't, you know, we feel will continue to be a problem. We're addressing it. We're working with student services. We're happy to say that BCBA started with us this week. As you know, that was one of those positions that we were waiting to come on board because of commitments with other districts, but they have started and they'll be a really a data-driven decision person behind what we do. But I just wanted the board to be aware, it's nothing out of character for kids, but it's a little more than we typically see in our buildings. And that's it for correspondence, resignations, and nominations.
Okay, thank you. Bear with me for one moment. All right, so we're going to review approval of minutes. And we'll start with the meeting minutes from the Brookline School Board on September 22nd. The following amendments were offered. Page four, line 22, replace "they" with "it." Page six, line 43, correct the spelling of "but." Page seven, line 24, replace "is" with "are." Page seven, line 46, replace "he" with Principal Molinari. Page eight, line 45, replace "works" with "work." Page nine, line 11, remove the random S before "not." And page 19, line 13, replace "to" with "of" before "fund." So I need a motion to accept as amended?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Four to zero, thank you. Okay, so with that, that brings us to public input. And what I'd ask, I would just want to quickly remind what that means for policy BEDH. If you could please come up and identify yourself with your name and home address, please. And as we noted, it would be a three-minute limit per person. So feel free to come on up. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Mike Byer, Two Kemp Drive, Brookline. A couple things I wanted to mention tonight. Andy, thanks for your candor and the invitation to meet last month following the school board meeting. We're looking forward to working with the school board to try and come to a middle ground on masks. So thank you for that invitation. One thing that I wanted to point out is I was reading through the notes in tonight's meeting in prep for this conversation. When we look at the numbers that are quoted for active cases in Hollis and Brookline with a total combined population of over 12,000 people, having only 25 active cases on any given week is less than one-fifth of 1% of the population has an active case. So I'm not sure how that correlates to, you know, pandemic-level response. To me, that just doesn't make a lot of sense because the risk doesn't seem to match the reward. Or should I say, the resources or the way that we're responding to it doesn't necessarily seem to correlate with the severity of the issue. I had some other questions pertaining to other parts of the conversation tonight. So in looking at the administration of federal grant funds, part of the process, that documentation seemed to be in draft form. So when in looking through some of those documents and the requirements and the policies, there were some concerns related to contracting and procurement processes that I wanted to bring up that I think could have substantially detrimental impacts on compliance to government, especially federal government policies, specifically mentioning that there aren't, there don't seem to be any policies or requirements for cybersecurity-related concerns when it comes to risk management. I do see specific, very limited documentation on breach remediation in terms of the costs of breach remediation, that a vendor would be liable to reimburse the school district for if things happened. However, I don't see anything specifically calling out what the limits of liability are and what the indemnification requirements are.
I just want to warn you, you've got about a minute left.
Sure. I don't see anything related to cybersecurity-related insurance policies. I don't see anything related to any type of how the school board is going to comply with monitoring the compliance of these vendors when you have to report back to the federal government. So in, I didn't see anything pertaining to that in the meeting minutes, and I would highly suggest that you either ask me for help. I'd be glad to give you my advice for free. It's what I do for a living. Or I would strongly suggest you spend an arm and a leg on a cybersecurity consultant to build this for you because you need it. The other thing is with the job opening, Andy, there is a specific job responsibility for that individual that talks about creating policies for data handling guidelines. Typically, people with this background and this type of a job description are not qualified to make those particular policy-related decisions in the traditional business world. I would ask you to reconsider having this person be responsible for mandating policy on data collection and data classification.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening. Drew Kalner, 7 Yankee Way. I actually came out tonight, I felt obligated after watching some of the previous meetings. I've had the privilege of serving on several committees and boards and nonprofits over the years, and often overlooked as saying thank you. So I want to thank the entire board for their service. I know this was a difficult 24-month period that none of you signed up for. The administration is included in that as well. I appreciate the efforts that you've put in over the last year and a half. I think we were very fortunate to be able to be in school last year. Most of my peers across the country are not in that position. So wanted to say thank you. I also appreciate the effort that you are undertaking in terms of listening to guidance from CDC, DHHS, other schools. I know it's a difficult choice, and I know not everyone in the room or parents agree. I think you're doing an admirable job in terms of weighing all the evidence and trying to plot the best course. You're not going to make everybody happy, and that's okay. To the people that are watching at home or in the audience here, remember that these are your neighbors. You know, they stepped forward to do this service. It's not an easy job, and especially when you throw something like this at them. Just remember that when you come up to make a comment or you're sending them an email, just sleep on it a little bit. You know, you're going to see these people out at soccer games or you're going to serve on other committees with them. You know, be civil and realize that we are in extraordinary circumstances and have a little bit of faith that we're making the decisions with best thought in mind. So again, thank you, and continue doing what you're doing. There's lots of people at home watching, you know, so there may only be three or four people in this audience, but there's magnitudes of that at home watching. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Pete D'Agostino, 9 Lewis Drive. Drew did a better job than I was going to do. So I'll just echo a lot of his comments. And I've been, I've had an opportunity to review some of the board meetings for other purposes that we're working on in town. And just wanted to come out and tell you that other people support what you're doing. We know it's a tough decision. Keep following the science. Let's do the best we can. But thank you for keeping our kids in school and doing that to the best of your ability. So I want to echo what Drew said, who I think he said it well, but I just wanted you to hear from other folks that having watched the meeting, they've been a couple of tough meetings, and we appreciate what you're doing and keeping the kids in school. So thank you.
Thank you.
Melinda Albona, 76 Ever Road. Last month, you almost answered my question. Like the policy itself, it's vague and not fully flushed out. How long after the vaccines are available? Substantial spread according to where? The town, the county, the state? The fact that we as parents can't get a clear answer to the very basic questions is another example of there seeming to be a lack of any leadership bias for action or ability to clearly create a policy and evaluate its risks. You've left an entire group of parents with no representation and nowhere to go except get a lawyer or pull their kids from school. You've addressed none of their concerns or even mentioned the packets of data and research they have given you, and you have done nothing to mitigate the harm these policies are causing. This board mandated a policy and then did nothing to ensure it was being followed safely, consistently, humanely, or even hygienically. And when you were told these policies were hurting children, the board did nothing. The policy lacks any logic or reasoning. Sitting in the cafeteria, talking and eating is safe, but sitting in the classroom quietly working is not. Depending on the teacher for the day, that lunch break is all the breaks the kids get. Telling us that our children would be able to mix, but finding out that you just made those pods bigger. Any separation at recess is already rendered ineffective by the fact that these pods mix every day on the bus, at sporting events, parties, play dates. Your policy has done nothing to prevent the spread of the less contagious common cold. Please explain why when children are sneezing or coughing into their masks, teachers aren't having them change them right away. How is stewing in their own mucus and snot good for their health? Perhaps the superintendent could ask his two doctor friends about that or the multiple other problems we have brought to your attention. Your policy has made schools less healthy and less safe, turning school into a place of constant fear and uncertainty. The board stated it cares. Your lack of literally any action shows otherwise. The board said that it would listen to fact and reason that they hadn't made up their minds already. The lack of discourse, honesty, and transparency shows otherwise. The theory that your logic-defying policies have anything to do with the number of cases in the schools does not hold water when looking at real-world data, even data from the school next door. Of the nine current outbreaks in New Hampshire, five were masks and four were optional. And as of right now, this policy is causing harm, and you're choosing to do nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Mary LaBaron, Parker Road, Brookline. I was up here last month, and I told you the story of how my children did very poorly last year. So this year, we've decided to place them into a private school because in a private school, they'll honor doctor's notes for exemptions for masking. And I'm excited to hear that that could possibly be changing soon so that we're not just, we're paying for taxes and tuition times four, which has been really difficult. So it's really exciting to hear that that could potentially change. I wanted to also ask if you were training the nurses, the school nurses, to deal with any adverse effects from the children being vaccinated. I know that there have been some adverse reactions to them, and I just was wondering if the school is preparing for any of that to happen in school, that nurses would know what to do with it and know what they're seeing when they look at a child. So that's not what I had prepared for tonight, but I just wanted to say that I'm excited about the masking being removed. That's a big deal for us. My children can't, cannot wear masks. So we're doing a 45-minute commute, and we're doing thousands of dollars in tuition a month. And it'd be nice to be able to participate and for them to see their friends again. So thanks.
Thank you.
Caleb LaBaron, Paco Road, Brookline. Thanks. I hate masks. I can't breathe in them. They are annoying. They fall down when you talk, and I always have to fix them. I can't see my friends' faces. I can't recognize people in masks. I can't tell what they are feeling. Mask makes me nervous, and I can't breathe. I don't like wearing them. Kids shouldn't have to wear masks. It's a punishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, one more call for any more public input?
So the sign out said, sign out front said, "Wear a mask when you come in the building." Is that the rule, or can I take this off to talk, or someone nod?
Yeah, you can take it down if you want to talk into the mic. Go ahead.
Okay. So my name's Buddy Doherty. Live in Nella Road, Brookline. Been a resident of the town for 60 years. Grew up here, saw it all happen. I don't have children in the school, but as Ronald Reagan said, "I'm paying for this microphone." Everybody who has one child in school might pay for that child's tuition to school, and the rest of us in town are paying for the other 1.3. So, "Watch the last meeting from home on my lazy boy. Couldn't believe the disrespect that you were being given because your opinion is different than theirs." I spoke to Drew earlier. He kind of stole some of my thunder here. I've always voted. I might not have voted for you personally because I knew you, but I voted because someone said something either good about you or I knew that that other person was not good for this board. So sometimes you vote for a person because you really don't like the alternative. So I don't want you to be bullied. Don't do it. I can't believe how many bullies have come to town who think that that's how they're going to get their way. And I'm dismayed at seeing how people think that that's how it's going to work. If a parent is like that, their child is probably going to grow up to be the same way. So I'm here to support you. You didn't sign up for this, and I wouldn't have blamed you if you just folded up your tent and marched away. People who do not like the way things are going have four choices. They can keep the children home and educate them. They can send them to Bishop Gerton and educate them there. They can see if they get 25 friends who sign, put their name on the ballot to be school board. So you're here, I support you, and I just want you to keep up the fight. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we'll close public input then. Thank you all for your input and feedback. Appreciate that. Okay, so with that, we are now moving to the principals' report piece of our meeting.
Okay, good evening. We had a, our book fair last week, and it was a huge success. And I want to thank the PTO and the volunteers that supported our book fair. It was our first book fair since the start of COVID.
Dan, I just want to say one thing. As people are leaving, if you want to turn in, because I know some people made public comment with specific questions, I want to make sure those questions are addressed. So if you want to turn in, tune in. I guess you're the, well, Mike's still here, but when, when you're home, I do intend to ask some of these questions. Sorry.
Oh, no. Okay. So we had a very successful book fair. We didn't have a parent night, but from what I've heard, it was one of our most successful book fairs. And the kids had a blast. It was great for them to have a normal book fair again. Last year, the PTO did it virtually, and they did a phenomenal job with that. But we were in a position to do it in person, and it was, it was well-received. We're also excited to share that we're going to be bringing back our traditional Halloween parade, something that's been in our town for a long, long time. And it'll be wonderful to invite the families on our school grounds as we parade around the building. We did share that if the weather doesn't cooperate, we will be indoors and there won't be any parent participation. But if we're outdoors, it will be great to have families there to attend that. And we're also excited to have the Blue Jay lead our parade. And we wonder who that will be. So, and then in November, we, you know, we've got a series of days where we have Veterans Day coming up, and there are events around the district where we celebrate Veterans Day, especially in Hollis. They have a Veterans Day celebration. We in Brookline always do a Memorial Day celebration. And then on the 12th, our teachers are going to be, as a district, we have our professional development day. So there'll be no school on that day. And that's, that for the most recent, those are for the dates. And then we also have the half-day as well, which is the 23rd. It will be a half-day. And I forget the, I forget what day of the week that is, but Tuesday, Tuesday, yeah. And then in terms of staffing, we are, we are still down two MTSS paraeducators. We lost a para recently, so that would have made five. We just recently hired, so we're still at four paras to hire. And then we are in the hiring process for a school nurse. So that's our update for Brookline and RMS.
Hello, everyone. For CSDA, our staffing needs, right now, we are working, we're in the hiring process of a reading teacher. We're still looking for one MTS paraeducator, and we also need a paraeducator for special education. In regard to social-emotional learning activities, we're continuing to use the Choose Love program and associate that. We, again, focus on that on announcements every morning so that teachers can integrate that into their classrooms and activities. We're also working, I want to give credit to our guidance counselor, Mrs. Wazinski Bumpus, as far as she's been going into classrooms, particularly on Fridays or other times during the week, for social skills, specifically focusing on personal space, looking at, or teaching children self-awareness, being responsible for decision-making and how to do that appropriately in coordination with, with friends, and relationship skills and friendship building. Next month, we'll be focusing on anti-bullying, and we're also tying in with the PTO. I want to shout out to the PTO for contacting me. We may be looking into a program that will be a virtual program that we'll be able to bring in-house for, that's appropriate for grades four, five, and six. And again, just furthering that social-emotional learning that we're trying to integrate into the classrooms on a consistent basis. And again, as Andy was mentioning, you know, we are seeing uptick in behavior situations, so we're hoping, you know, all of these activities will help to mitigate that and that we can, you know, support these children's needs.
And we have the Brookline Food Pantry Project. Currently, we have a cereal box donation going on, and we're really excited about this. This is something that the PTO, along with Mrs. Winters, who's helping out lead this, we're going to be doing a domino, cereal box domino fall, both RMS and CSDA. And currently at RMS, we have 208 boxes. Mrs. Bula?
I don't have a number yet.
Okay. So we're ready for this, and it's going to be really exciting. We're going to line the kids up in the hallway and watch them flow. So that's exciting. And I want to thank Mrs. Winters and the PTO for helping us with that idea. And also-
It sounds like Dan just threw down a challenge.
Yeah.
I think so, sorry. Anyone listening?
Yeah.
Bring in those boxes.
And, but also to the families donating because it's going to a good effort to help support our Brookline Food Pantry, which, again, Mrs. Winters has just done a phenomenal job with that. And then for our SEL at Brookline, Mrs. Bowery, very similarly to CSDA, has been going around as well, talking about self-regulation, self-awareness, doing activities such as mindful, mindful walks, observation, just some movement and dance to help with that and to improve the social-emotional learning. And then we continue to do the best we can to recognize as many students as possible on a daily basis with our Blue Jay Awards. It's getting to the point where every Friday, I list all the- It's getting to the point where every Friday, I list all the students that win for the week or that, that are being recognized. And I almost need another board because it's, it's just overflowing, which is just wonderful to see. And last week, we had a lot, to give you an idea of how many students, the line of students was from the main office doors to the kitchen doors. So, it, it's going really well and we're trying our best we can to just recognize all the good thing that, that's going on in the building with the students, so.
I just want to mention, I should have mentioned it earlier, that we're also doing the Wolf Pack Wall of Honor, as you saw in the hallway. And we also do the same thing as far as students are recognized on Fridays. And I really want to give a shout out to the students, but also to their families. It's really a pleasure of mine to meet with each individual that gets nominated on a weekly basis. And it gives me that opportunity to have that one-on-one. And some of the things that they're being recognized, it's just being a good, kind person. And, you know, when I congratulate the students and say, "Make sure you bring this nomination home to your families and share that with them. Be proud of it." It really brings a smile to their face. So I'm really proud of them.
All right. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll move into our discussion piece. So we have four topics, a lot around budgeting. And then last is our renovations, facilities committee discussion. So we'll start with you. What was that?
I was just going to ask, since I just kind of committed to the public, that we'd answer some questions related to public input. And there, I just noticed that there isn't any discussion around, around that because we talked about it during Andy's memo. But I don't know if, when we're done, we can have a little bit of a discussion related to Andy's memo.
Yep.
Is that okay? Okay.
I'm going to turn it over to Donna Smith. She's going to take care of the final numbers for FY21, give you the update on the revenue and expense report for the first quarter. I will cover the SAU, the FY23 budget and, as well as the SAU budget. Go ahead, Donna.
Okay. In your packet, first of all, you have the FY21 year-end revenue expense report. The auditors have completed their fieldwork and we ended the year with a savings of $586,132. The attached explanation page shows more descriptive reasons for the savings, but some of these savings is due to personnel changes related to COVID-19. Bus transportation costs were cut due to revamping the bus routes. And we had a decent savings and benefits due to health insurance choices and lower salary-related taxes and benefits. On the revenue side for FY21, we came in at $175,951 more than budgeted. The extra fund, there were extra funds in the grants and Federal Food Service, which is primarily where the surplus was. Lunch was free all year long and more meals were consumed. Lunch and breakfast, actually. So, we have a bud, we had budgeted a fund balance for the year of $200,000. However, after funding the trusts and subtracting the expenses, we are left with a fund balance of $517,582, which will be used to reduce taxes. I don't know if there's any questions on the year-end one. I can present FY22's current.
Anybody?
Okay.
All right. We're all set. Thank you.
So for FY22, this was as of 9:30, 2021. First of all, our budget for FY22 is $10,527,012. With the current year-to-date expenses and our future encumbrances, which are what we are planning to spend throughout the rest of the year, we currently do not see much of a savings. Plus, at this point, it's still very early in the year, so numbers are going to change. As far as revenues, again, being early in the year, we've not yet received all the revenue expected. So we allocate what we expect in the expected column. And it basically leaves us with a projected fund balance of $1,184. Obviously, the fund balance is not going to be the same as last year due to all the, the COVID funds that we got. But we, you know, things are running normal this year. Things will be tight. And we already have an unforeseen special education cost, which will likely result in the use of the special ed trust fund. That's all I have.
So is, just, you had a comment about the special ed trust fund. Is the, does the encumbered, is that what the, the anticipated through the year where we're projecting to be fifty-nine in the red or do we expect that to grow throughout the year?
I'm sorry, where are you, the fifty?
I'm looking at the expense, the special ed line, where you just talked about, we're probably going to have to use the special ed.
We, we may have to, yes. We don't really have a set number yet on.
So is the, so the encumbered and the year-to-date expense, is that the projection through the year? I guess that's what I'm asking. That's the projection, is that it's fifty-nine potentially, or, or that we may see that increase throughout the year? That's what I'm just curious about.
It may increase throughout the year, yeah. That's our projected right now.
That's the projection as of today. Got it. Thank you.
But it's still too soon to, to know exact.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
At the same time, it should be noted that as Dan and Tricia talk about positions that aren't filled, those dollars are already encumbered. So there'll be some of that money coming back in different ways. Also understand you have the contingency fund, which is encumbered at this time of year.
Yep.
We have the special ed trust fund and then we have the reserve fund balance that you voted to approve, which was a little over 1%. So, it's going to be a, a difficult budget because, again, when we do things eighteen months in advance and then over the summer, we have students arrive who are, have needs. We're obligated to take care of those needs. But I have every confidence in Donna and Kelly. And typically, this is something that grows. I will say that we don't typically start out with such a small balance. But at the same time, I know in talking with Amy and Lauren, there's a lot of decisions that will be taking place in the next, probably, six to twelve weeks.
Okay, thanks. And then just from a mechanic standpoint, this sometimes happens where we may not see it the year before, but then it's baked into the future budget cycles from a federal government funding standpoint as well, right? So we have that as part of our twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll see some of that as well?
That's correct. Some of these students will be eligible for reimbursement through IDEA funds.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, also in your packet, again, we won't take action on this tonight, but we provide you with the annual calendar that shows all the different districts and the different dates. Now, one of the dates that we'll be talking about next month is if we decide to move forward with the bond. There'll be specific requirements around bond hearings and things of that nature, as well as this. You were on an email today. We got in the town report submission deadline. That has been, become an issue the last couple of years because the town is still an annual meeting. We're in SB two, they're two different calendars. And I don't know if there'll ever be a change to us, both of us becoming annual meeting again or both of us becoming SB two again, but there's always going to be that conflict. So what we do do is we publish the information brochure that comes out of the Assistant Superintendent's Office so that folks have information on each of the warrant articles to make an informed decision when they do go to the polls that night here. Okay, so we'll be talking more specifically about bond dates, if that's something the board decides to do. Also in your budget packet was the SAU 41 budget. We take time at the district meetings just to go over that. As was pointed out, we did provide the board with an updated communication specialist job description. I heard some points tonight that we will take into account and probably make some adjustments, but we wanted to get out in ahead of that so that it was in probably close to final phases when we get to December, which is the SAU board's time for the public hearing on the budget in any positions like that. The SAU budget, just to go to the back of that, we are proposing $2,107,176, which is just the SAU functions. That is a change of an increase of $149,579. The bulk of that increase, almost 4%, is made up with the potential new position that the voters will have the opportunity to, to vote on. Other than that, it's pretty much a level-headed, a level-funded budget. Voters always have two numbers to choose from in the SAU budget. If they were to not approve the position, they'd be looking at a proposed budget of $2,14,538 for a 2.9% increase. If they approved the adjusted budget, which, again, would not contain the position, that would be $2,118,210 or a 3.1% increase. So, right there, we're pretty much apples to apples from the adjusted to the proposed. It's just a matter of the position regarding communication and compliance. At the SAU board meeting, we heard some concerns that we were trying to put in another layer of getting to our people. And it's, for me, it's just the opposite. There are a number of things that we sometimes struggle to get back to because of the different things that come across our plate. And I don't intend to use the position as kind of someone who gets in the means, in the way of my communication. I still answer my phone, I still answer my own emails, and I intend to do that in the future. This is more around a number of compliance issues that keep coming down from both the federal and the state government. I think the board knows there are another 200 bills that are just specific to education in this year's legislative session. Many of those end up coming down in our actual costs because their manpower, their time, their requirements that we have to fulfill. So that's why we're asking for that communications position. And again, the SAU public hearing on that will be December 16th, which is a Thursday. That'll take place right here at CSDA. We have canceled basketball for that night, so I'd like to thank the basketball folks. So that way, we'll have a larger space and use the gym to give us the spacing to address any concerns people might have. And that's it for the three budget pieces. Are there any questions about that?
So is the, is the SAU position going to be a separate article on the warrant for the SAU piece or is it going to be incorporated just into the proposed budget?
It goes into the proposed budget. And if a voter was to approve the budget, they're approving the position.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're on to the big topic tonight around our energy and renovation discussion.
In your board packet, there was a wealth of information. I'd actually like to kind of work off the October 27th memo that I sent off to Alan Rosenberg, Planning Board and Capital Improvements Chair, because I think from our perspective, Dan, Tricia, myself, Kelly, we're just looking for some guidance to kind of put, what I'd say, concrete numbers or the best estimates that we can so that in November and December, we can have two months of solid discussions around what the needs are, what the costs are, and what we're able to, to move forward. So, the renovations proposed, first of all, at RMS and CSDA, we're looking at infrastructure. And what I mean by the infrastructure is boilers in both buildings could use updating. We need to review our HVAC, which is in much better shape in this building, being only 20 years old as opposed to Dan's building, which is probably close to 60 years old. The, we would be studying the conversion from oil to propane. That would allow us to work with both towns and give us more buying power around purchasing propane and pre-buying so that we can get rates that are advantageous. In terms of Dan's school, we're at the point where I think the installation of an elevator is a must for ADA compliance. We have two classrooms on the bottom floor and other available space that we could utilize more on a permanent basis, but we need to be in compliance. So we are looking at an elevator to be added to that building. And I think that really should be in phase one because the minute we open up those two classrooms, if we were to continue to usurp other areas, we could handle the enrollment crunch for a period of time. We believe that we should be moving to LED lighting to reduce expenses. That payback is relatively quick. It's a much better system. It's something we've just done in Hollis Primary School. And it's really made a difference because then we're also able to put our boilers, our lights, everything on a building management system. So our custodian or director of facilities can control the heat and everything virtually in, if need be. RMS would be investigating the installation of a fire suppression system based on the recommended renovations of the building. RMS would be updating its kitchen facilities to provide a modernized facility to meet the needs of approximately 300 students it provides meals for. There are space constraints in our kitchen, but there are also items that were purchased many years ago that have become obsolete in the industry. So we believe by reconfiguring the kitchen, updating the equipment, that we can establish a very modern, efficient kitchen in the same, roughly the same space that it's in. We had talked a little bit about, could we have a different facility, a cafeteria, so that the gym and the cafeteria would be separate, similar to what we have here. We just don't believe at this time that we'd be cost-effective and we're going to have to make, you know, tough decisions around this. So we would continue to base our academic schedule around lunches, which has worked well and I think continue to work well, but is not the ideal. RMS would construct four new classrooms or equivalent space to allow for increased enrollment and the continuation of required services to meet the needs of our student population. When I say four classrooms or equivalent space, there's been some discussion on the facilities committee from the SAU point of view. If you look at our current library at RMS, that is the equivalent of two classrooms. But it's very centrally located from an academic point of view. So it may be more cost-effective to convert the old library into two new classroom spaces so that we can group our classes by our kindergarten together, all of grade one, all of grade two. And then coming off the rear of the building over near the basketball court to build potentially what I'll call a new multipurpose space because I think it could be much more efficient. And by building it as a multipurpose space, it will allow us to flex and grow as enrollment flexed and grows. So that might mean that in that space to begin with, we gain back a computer room, which would have taken this year to provide services. It may mean that we have smaller reading spaces that serve both the library as well as our special ed students who require reading services. So that's what we mean by equivalent space. And we're really going to look at that from the, the point of view, sometimes building a larger structure with less walls, from a heating, AC, all of those points can be much more efficient. And then we would really like to move the main office. Right now, it's kind of awkward. You, you come into a basement of a building and there's very little supervision and you have to go upstairs and you have to check in. So everybody who's there for the right reasons follows the procedures. The problem is what happens when it's not someone there for the right reasons. So we'd like to move the main office down to the Milford Street door. Is that the correct road? Did I get that right? And we'd take over some of the existing space to make our offices. It puts the main office, again, right next to the nurse, which we think is very convenient. It will allow us to, again, put our guidance counselor there and those services. And the spaces that we would be giving up, Dan's office, the office reception area, the administrative assistance office, the nurse, would all become service rooms for our special ed students. Because one of the things that I know Lauren and Amy are working on is the continued growth of our self-contained special ed programming. To give you an example, on occasion, we get students who come in that we don't have a program for right now. The first thing we do is we look in Hollis because we have a couple of programs there and Brookline has a couple of programs, and we share back and forth because that would be the best, least constrictive educational environment. Then before we go out to an outer district placement, we would also look to our neighbors in Nashua because sometimes the wealth and the size of their district allows them to have specific program. We work with our families around that. The next alternative is an outer district placement, whether that's a day placement or a residential. With transportation, you're looking at a day program probably being somewhere to $100,000 to $120,000 for that one student, depending on their needs. A residential placement can be- A residential placement can be, you know, anywhere from two-hundred thousand, which is relatively close from a transportation model, but we have some students who are transported down into Massachusetts, and those run us between three and four hundred thousand dollars for a placement. Now, our department has worked very hard. We don't have a wealth of placements, because we believe, first of all, that we can offer the best programming here. So that's why we have people like a BCBA, school psychologist, those folks, and many of those are shared, because they're expensive positions. But by sharing those across multiple districts, we get the benefit of the consistency of service, as well as the benefit when the child transitions out of the Brookline or the Hollis district into the co-op district. It's not a transition for the parent, the same service provider is following that child. Switching over to CSDA, we would upgrade their HVAC control and fire alarm system as they are both approaching the end of life. When we talk about, in this case, the fire alarm system, we're actually talking the fire panel, okay? A CSDA would replace its inefficient fluorescent lighting, so all this lighting would move to LED. They would be investigating, again, the installation of a fire suppression system. That decision is up to your local fire chief in conjunction with the state fire marshal with regard to fire suppression systems. CSDA would be looking to construct three new classrooms to allow for increased enrollment and the continuation of required services to meet the needs of our student population. One of the things we would be doing is we have two portables that are located at this end of the building. Those portables would be removed, and the building, the addition, would actually be on the other end of the wing, so the three classrooms would kind of form a T down at the other end of the hallway. So the portables would be used during that transition. When the construction was done, the portables would be removed. I can assure you, they have served their useful life. They were intended to be a short-term fix, and they've been with us for about twenty A couple of things we're looking at on the facilities committee is when we talk about the infrastructure, our boilers, our controls, potential solar and LED light, lighting, there are the ability to potentially engage in a performance contract. So from a tax point of view, they become like cost-neutral, because the company will come in and do those renovations, and they will see the, the benefits through the reductions of those costs, and that's how they'll move forward. That can be done through a lease contract or a bond. The nice part of a lease is that you're only paying interest on the money you're using, whereas once we take the bond, we start paying interest on the bond. The first year is usually a, just a six-month interest payment, and then the following year, the entire bond kicks in. In the lease payment, if we were only to get through, say, Dan's boilers, Dan's lighting and that during the summer, and let's just say the whole project was a million, and Dan spent five hundred thousand in his, the, we're not paying interest on the other five hundred thousand. It's actually sitting in an account of ours, and it's actually earning a minimal rate, but at least it's earning. So there's a benefit to both strategies, and you may want to use different strategies for different pieces of this. When you look at, you know, changing to brick-and-mortar classrooms, that lends itself to a much longer-term bond. And in either case, whether it's a lease or a bond, we'd like to look at the term so it's spread over multiple years of taxpayers. You know, you don't necessarily want this project to be borne by just the people who are living in Brookline now, because there'll be a future benefit to people moving into the community. So this will probably be somewhere between a ten- and a twenty-year bond to spread those costs over. In terms of ADA, safety, and fire protection upgrades, I think those are pretty much a must, you know, as much as we can. We have to take our aging buildings and catch them up. Obviously, the additions to both schools provide us more educational space. What it basically does gives us five classrooms at each grade level, which would allow us to keep the board specs for class sizes, which we heard last month was very important to a wide variety of community members and for those people that are looking into becoming residents of Brookline. In terms of the renovations to the RMS main office to improve access and service provider spaces, I really think that also adds another safety level. I think everybody would become much more aware where the entrance to the building is, and I kind of like the idea of one-stop shopping, whether I'm coming there to pick up my child who might be sick at the nurse, or drop off something that they forgot at home. It's one central location, and it also becomes a drop-off pickup point for all our youngest children, whether it be the two- or three-day kids for the three- and four-year-old programs, or our kindergarten students who are pretty much picked up on a regular basis. The initial estimates, as we heard last month, range from eleven million to sixteen million. I think that the facilities committee is going to be doing some discussion this month before coming back in November, trying to really narrow that focus and trying to get more concrete estimates around the pieces we're talking about. And then we'll use November and December to kind of flush out all the questions the board has, community input over those months, and really kind of get something that we believe that will allow us to move forward, but at the same time, be cognizant of the tax impact. You know, right now, at the co-op, the only, what I'd say, large expense item, they will be getting some quotes to air-condition the third floor, just because that heat has become excessive and oppressive. And it was one of the things that came up through parent responses on asset funding. I'm not sure if the board will even move forward with it, but that would be really what I would say is the only piece that's out there that would be of significance. The co-op board is also doing a study, but they're preparing for probably an enrollment spike in two or three years. So I do not see them putting forth those potential bonds at this time. So this would pretty much, from a, a point of view, be a, a year where we may be able to balance the needs, because we also do not, do not have a contract negotiations this year. So there's, there's not a lot on the warrant. And I'd be happy to take any questions or answer anything you might have seen in the packet. Dan will do his best to assist me. He's been instrumental in, in moving this forward and kind of really helping guide it along with Lance, and Kelly is the one who continually brings us, keeps bringing us back to the numbers.
Okay. I have some that I wrote down. Can I go first? Is that okay? All right. So, first question, I get, this is probably when we get to it in November, December, but I, I'm thinking, we're probably thinking of adding these as a couple of different lines, because I kind of see personally the energy pieces, maybe the, that to me seems like a, a lot of people would get behind that. The renovation, you may have a little, but, so it's not an all or nothing thing, right? Is that what our strategy is there? Okay.
I, I think it should also be noted that I, I don't know if we should be doing them in terms of one proposal in one year, because we only have a ten-week window during the summer to do projects. So if we decided to move forward with infrastructure and energy, that might be something we're looking to do next summer.
Mm-hmm.
And then coming back to the voters again. I think as long as the voters know what the long-term plan is, they'll do their best to support what they can.
Yep. So I think the, one of the big questions that we'll need to have a real good sense and feel for is with those classroom renovations, and we got our updated NASDAQ, how far out does this get us then? Are we solving just the immediate next thing, or are we solving for the next decade with this? And five classrooms is a good amount, so I gotta believe it does give us some runway. And this is not quite as sporty as I thought it was going to be, seeing the latest and greatest, which was, which was encouraging. I feel like we can get our arms around it, probably, with all this. So that's the big question. I don't know if we can answer that tonight, but...
I think the, the goal of the architectural firm and the energy firm was looking at this to solve for a decade.
Okay.
They really felt that doing much less than that, you're going to regret it.
Yep.
And the example they used, quite frankly, was, we're sitting in a cafeteria that was really not built to size for the building, and we're kind of stuck with it now, because the way it's constructed, it would be very difficult to build off of this, you know, because the kitchen is here. So that was one of the things that we discussed about, could we add on to the cafeteria here to gain more space? And the, the bang for the buck, it's, it's simply not there, you know? So we may have to look at something down the road if enrollment really grew, of, you know, can we use our gymnasium during some lunch periods? What are the, you know, those type of things? Because I, I think one of the items that changes this type of plan for our communities during my tenure is the economy. So if all of a sudden, the economy went back to where it was in two thousand, you know, twelve, thirteen, we saw a lot of families who were being transferred out, because a lot of the industry was moving them out to other places. So we have to, that balancing act, that our birth rate doesn't necessarily show enrollment, it's our move-in rate, and it's typically, until the last two years, Ben, that the elementary schools would gain a child or two from the family, but they were really moving in for the high school. Now we seem to have flipped over, and we seem to be seeing a lot of younger families who are going to be with us for the long haul.
Thanks. Yeah, so, so looking at this latest, when I was reading today, what, sixty-five from today, data point to twenty thirty-one, so that's a decade. Doing the quick math with the five classrooms, I, I believe that certainly would solve, even, unless we saw a bubble of all of that, but that, that's not what this shows, right? Okay.
Well, and the other thing it allows us to do is, it allows us to continue to create capacity for our special ed in-house programming, because those costs pretty much go up about five percent a year. And that's a very, very difficult cost, and the more we can do to build that capacity, first of all, again, I believe it's much better for our students, but second, it, it allows us to avoid costs. You don't necessarily save any money, but you're just avoiding cost of what you would have to pay to go for a service.
And just kind of piggybacking on the space and thinking into the future, I like what you said about sort of the multifunctional space, because in addition, like, there's things like special ed, but there's also things like technology and what classrooms are going to look like in ten years. You know, we, we may need some, a very versatile space that might be able to function as an overflow cafeteria, but could also be a place where students work at their own pacing independently, you know? So I, I, and I, I appreciate the architects sort of having their eye towards the future too, because those are pieces where we can get some efficiency when we incorporate, you know, where classrooms, where, what classrooms at this grade level are going to look like in ten years.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. Is that area over top of RMS, are we going to break the wall down to expand for what the map's showing, so that that's not just a big dead space of coming up? Are we going to use that all? I see a lift in there too, but it's...
Right. Well, in terms of the, the elevator, the most likely where the architect has talked about is the present side stairwell.
Okay.
Okay? So that would not have two sets of stairs going up each side.
Yep.
One side would be an elevator, the other side would be a stairwell. In terms of the potential addition, you can look at it two ways, and this is part of what has to be flushed out by the facilities committee. We have some rooms down that end of the building near the basketball court that are slightly undersized. So it may or may not be advantageous to expand those rooms. Sometimes a small expansion like that is, is not worth the money. If those rooms were not to be expanded because we can use them for service providers, then what we'd look at is the exit at that end of the building would now become the walkway to the new multipurpose. And we would keep some green space, because as you know, Dan has started one outdoor classroom, which is basically out his office. That would be another opportunity to have a second outdoor classroom there adjacent to the playground. So it gives us two spots where our children would be, what I would say, very safe, but have access to the playground, but have potential for two outdoor classroom settings.
So you talked about the solar piece, that caught my attention too. So is Hollis, does Hollis own those, or are they doing a program like that where they lease it out to a company? Or did they outright buy, and did they get some kind of federal or state grant for, for the solar?
They actually did the solar in their bond.
Okay.
They were able to put a solar array on the HPS roof and the Hughes roof. We actually generate more than enough electricity now to take care of those buildings. We made the decision at HPS, we went to air-source heat pumps, which are an electrical source, but those all run off the solar. And we are at times able to actually see our meter turn back, because we, we were able to buy into selling the power back to, to the company. If you went up to Hughes, their array is different, it's kind of on an angle.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it does, captures pretty much that. And they also have probably about eighty-five to ninety percent of their electricity is coming from there. At times, it's a hundred percent.
And it, was it a company that, so like in the residential areas, we had people go door-to-door that wanted to say, I will install solar panels at, I will, not me, but the company would own them, and I would, they would lease my roof, but my, my generated electricity, I would not have to pay for, but they would get the balance of that? Is that how this is, this program works?
Well, you, as a board, can select kind of either option. In Hollis, they chose to own them.
They own them, okay. Thank you. Yep.
But there are options where you can basically allow them to come in and do it, and they get the benefit over the long term. Now, I can tell you, one of the reasons we decided to own them in Hollis, because over the long term, there'll be long-term savings. It was immediate savings.
Yep.
But the payback was pretty quick.
Okay. And my last question, and then I'll yield here. The, when we talked about the, the bond and, and the lease, is the lease locked in at the time, so it's not a fluctuating type rate? Because I, I'm thinking now, obviously, rates are going to be better than they are in two or three years.
No, you, you can purchase your lease with a set rate.
Okay.
Typically, the leases have been slightly higher than the bonds.
Yep.
The New Hampshire Bond Bank has had the best rates, but the, the lease does give you a little more flexibility with the money as you're going through the process. Because again, when we passed the lease in Hollis, it was basically for two summers plus some school vacations. So it just made sense, and some of the money, you know, after the first year was probably a million to a, a million and a half dollars that was sitting in the account. Now, it doesn't generate a lot, but it's better than me paying interest on it.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. Appreciate all those, all the answers there.
I, I was just thinking about the phased approach and presenting that, because I think it's important for the community to know what needs to be done urgently, infrastructure-wise anyway, so where we are with our boilers and things like that, because those are costly items that are, you know, that are imminent either way. So I think that that's going to be an important piece of the presentation, where this isn't just like this, an elaborate wish list. This is, these are things that, as we've seen in touring the building, you know, we know need to get done quickly.
And as Dan will tell you, he's got boilers all over his building, and...
I think there's one in my office too.
So it's, it's not laid out that well, and in many cases, they're residential boilers.
Right.
So they don't have like, that automatic redundancy where we've actually got two boilers, and they're turning each other on and off, so that you're not putting the mileage on them as you potentially do when you have a much smaller boiler. I think one of the biggest things, you know, when I look at Dan's building, is that, that building control systems. You know, when we don't have school on a snow day, you know, a custodian remote taking that down to our, what I'll call, vacation heat levels would be appropriate.
Yeah.
You know? You know, when all your lights are then on timers, so you, you know, if a bathroom isn't used for a half an hour, or whatever amount of time it is, the lights are off, you know? So I think there's a lot of benefits there. I think from a standpoint of making the project manageable, phasing it is also very appropriate. But I think it would be, to me, if we decided on infrastructure, I'd like to package all the items for the two buildings, because I think that's doable in the summer. You know, multiple boilers, all the lights, Dan's building, we're already phasing in windows, so it would probably be beneficial just to get them all done and be done with it. We also would like to, to look at Dan's... We also would like to, to look at Dan's insulation value. You know, when we, when we did, brought the people in, in Hollis, that brick building, the bricks had an insulation of value of about three. So that's why we blew insulation in, changed the facade, and now we're at an insulation half factor of about forty. So it's been substantial difference. So not only did we go to a much more efficient heating system, but we made it much better and changed the windows. So there is that payback. But I think the most important payback is we want to do this so we're setting buildings up for decades. You know, your two buildings here, RMMS being much older and CSDA, you know, we want to get another useful life, another thirty years out of them. Because as I've said to the board, our neighbors in Amherst are doing a new school for about five hundred students and that's a fifty-five million dollar price tag. So I know our eleven to sixteen million is, is higher than I'd like it to be right now, but at the same time, a, a new building is going to be very, very expensive.
One thing I had that kind of touched upon what Erin brought up was I like the flexible space use that you're planned. Because instead of, in, in addition to just classroom space and special ed needs, there's the STEM lab, technology needs, maybe a science lab at CSDA, we could do a little bit more hands-on than you can at RMMS. So having that flexibility is important to plan for in the future. And also like maybe flexible teacher collaboration space. You've got that flexibility with these increased classrooms and I generally like the program.
In terms of, you know, Dan has already done it on a temporary basis, but our current library, he put a temporary wall down the middle, so we now have a library space and reading services. That's something if we were going to do permanently, we'd put one of those retractable walls like we have in the sixth grade here. Because I would say, most days when I visit, that wall is very seldom closed. And it's a collaboration environment between multiple teachers. And I really think that's where education is heading. And if we were to build this flexible space that was larger, the equivalent of, you know, a library of multiple rooms, that would be what we'd be looking at, how do we continue to be taking big spaces, making it small, but at the same time making them big when needed? Like, you know, Erin made a great point. It's not that we want to have lunch in there all the time, but to have the ability to have lunch in there, you know, like during a pandemic, would have been great to have two different locations.
That sixth grade collaboration space is wonderful.
Yeah, it really is.
Going back to Ken's question about the, the compliance with the, the room sizes too. I wonder too if we look at the flexible spacing with that area, because we're only off by about twenty square feet. So like, we're supposed to have at least nine hundred, nine hundred square feet for a classroom. Those ones are about like eight, eighty-four, you know. So if we looked at that option of even breaking down some of those cinder block walls, we may gain some space too, because it's flexible. So I'm just throwing that out there too.
Right. Yeah, and, and I guess there was one piece that I didn't ask that's been on my mind and then we just talked about flexible spaces. Are we giving any thought to a couple outside type learning environments with large beams and a roof, but something that the kids can change their day up? I know that we have the, the scouting project that's going to be awesome when that's up and, and that was maybe the start of it. But, you know, if we learned something this year too, changing up the routines and outside might be a thought too. And I don't think those are too terribly expensive, but it would offer like a campus type feel.
Yeah, and if I, if there was a space that I would recommend, I think it could be a multi-space, we're really on the multi word here today. So when we're doing card pickup and drop-off too, I don't know what you call it, but it's, it's like an overhead space, like a canopy kind of thing. But that, that would serve a couple purposes. We have a lot of classes that go out there and read and they use that in outdoor space right out on Milford Street. But also when we have inclement weather, it takes our carpool and our drop-off so much longer when it's pouring. And we've had a lot of those days. We could just have the kids underneath that as well. It's more efficient too, so we could, that would be one spot.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So with the board's permission, the plan for next month is the facilities committee would get back together between now and then, kind of start to narrow this focus. We would bring back our representatives from EEI and the architectural firm so that they could answer questions that you may have of why we can or why we can't do something. And what they might say for a phase one. You know, how would they package it? Because they may include things that we wouldn't think of. We might not think they're related, but from a construction point of view, you're going to have certain type of services on site, so let's maximize them when they're here. And then the, the plan would be to potentially, working with Dan and other members of the facilities committee, kind of do a, what I would say, public forum night. So anybody who wanted could come to the gym here. We'd kind of review the plans, get community feedback and kind of really put that forward. But it will be, you know, it's hard to believe October's over. I mean, I'm psyched that October's ending, but it's hard to believe October's ending the end of this week, you know, this weekend.
Good question.
That will be our plan, go ahead, Dan.
Just a quick question with the phasing. Are we thinking that we would, I know you say we want to bundle things, but are we going to focus on RMS first? And then CSD or just, just do the, do the energy, both buildings? So we, that, that's the thought, right?
Well, I think the, the, the piece that the board will have to work on is obviously RMMS is the moment, has already arrived. So we, we may need to move that forward with some of our energy pieces sooner rather than later. And that's the other reason why I like Dan's concept of potentially a flexible space over near the basketball court. Because we don't necessarily need to tie that into the building until the end. So that means we don't have construction workers in our building. You know, our summer work would be when they're in. But once our children return, you know, we work with them and we set up a separate environment where their working environment does not bring them in, in contact with the buildings.
Okay, the workshop idea sounds great with the architect firm here. That sounds, it'd be nice to hear some feedback and get a sense from the community as well. Really appreciate that idea. Okay, anything else at all? Good for now? Okay, we did add, in our discussion, we wanted to address a couple questions around the public comment. So did you want to start that, Erin?
Sure. One of the questions that I wrote down that I'm thinking about is medical exemptions and for, you know, how that works. Because I know there has been some discussion and it sounds like there could be some clarification for the public on if, you know, if there are accommodations and under what circumstances those are.
The medical exemptions all go through the student services department and all fall under the umbrella of a five oh four accommodation. So if we were to get a doctor's note from a family, we convene a five oh four team who goes through and determines what are reasonable accommodations to make for that environment. In pretty much all of those meetings, one of the goals is to, I would say, build mask tolerance. Because in, in some cases, when the child has a, a medical condition, we're trying to balance the risk of being exposed to COVID with the potential problems they face by wearing a mask. But we have families who have accessed those plans. And they would just need to contact Lauren DiGennaro at the SAU or their building principal and we can get that five oh four potential plan in, in the works.
Thank you. There was a question about school nurses and how they'll handle vaccine, effects of vaccines.
Right. I really don't have a concern with that because our school nurses are so adept at handling all different types of situations. I think we, we will know once the window opens. And I'm sure students would share, you know, did you get a vaccine yesterday? And they would know immediately to look at, you know, the area for the redness, the soreness. And many instances, the, the adverse impacts keep you out of school the next day. So I think it would be more kind of just monitoring the child with the nurses and, and being able to bring them back. But I think that's not something that really concerns me because again, our nurses have got us this far through COVID and I think they can get us over the finish line.
And then I, you know, I wanted to talk about what, you know, the vaccine. So having now that there's, there, there is conversation about it, the vaccine comes out. From my perspective, I don't think we can make a decision about, you know, before, prematurely about what we will do once the vaccine comes out in terms of, because I don't even know if it's, if it's knowledge yet, like how long for this, for the, for kids between doses. I would like more details on that. Of course, you know, once, as soon as there's an opportunity for what we feel our community is, is vaccinated, we can make decisions. I personally, and I don't know if you all want to chime in, I am hesitant about, you know, saying, here's what we're going to do when we don't have all of the information yet.
It's also not fully approved and there's a chance that it's only approved for immunocompromised children. It, it's still up for whether it's going to be approved for all children. So I agree with you, it's a little early to set in stone what we're going to do until it's, we know what the approval is going to be and who could be eligible for it.
Yeah, I, so, you know, feeling the pulse of everyone, I think our, I don't want to speak for everyone, but is a scientific off-ramp around the mask mandate. There was a question around what is substantial spread, so I do want to just quickly address that. We, we've said it, that we've, we've been pegged at DHSS, DHHS, which is DHPS now, which takes into account DHS, CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. DHS is defining substantial spread by counties. We live in Hillsborough, that is broken up between Hillsborough, Nashua and Manchester. And we are in a high, all of the state is right now. So that's, that's what's driving that. The, the, the guidance from the DHS and is around mask mandates for counties of substantial spread and areas of population with no vaccines. So that's why I think your comment about, you know, a plan long-term, yeah, we do, we do, we've heard the community. I think we, I, we've received a lot of emails this weekend support again, but here the people in, in the audience as well. And, you know, compromise around a scientific off-ramp based on that guidance is, is what I believe we're going to continue to talk about and, and look forward to. I, I do just want to thank everyone again for the feedback and appreciate the tone tonight. That was recognized from everyone, so I do want to thank that. And I do just quickly, we got a lot of emails this week. Got an email from a student, and I just want to give a quick shout out to Andrew. Appreciate you writing an email to the board and giving us your feedback there. I know he's actually watching this evening, so thank you, Andrew, for that too. I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
I like the scientific off-ramp, that's a good, did you come up with that? That's a good.
I may have, I don't know.
Let's get off of this and do it scientifically.
Okay.
I, I'm on board.
Great, thank you and appreciate all your feedback as we, as we look at this. Okay, so at this point, we're moving to deliberations. We have quite a few policy, policies to review. And Erin or Dan, do you want to walk us through that?
Yeah, I will walk you through that. So for the first one we have on, for review, is JLDBB Suicide Prevention Response. So this is up for a third reading and an adoption. The most recent change, when we met as a policy committee, if you look at the specific requirements or plan terms, item number one, we decided to strike out all that language because that is covered in RSA one ninety-three J colon two.
Okay. I think with this one, we were planning to move forward this evening as final, right?
Yes, third and adopt.
Yep. Just got to get up to the language here, sorry. Whoops. Okay, there we go. So we'll need a motion. There's a lot of language in here, I'm sorry. Oh, because I'm going to make the motion to amend policy JLDBB Suicide Prevention in its entirety by replacing it with the copy provided with the agenda and accept the third reading and adopt as amended. Need a second, please.
Second.
Okay, that's on the floor. Any further feedback on this one? Allison?
I just have a question. Is there specific language somewhere? It doesn't, not in this policy, but what we do and what the policy or procedure maybe is for, you know, under B or, I think it's under B.
It's the, I think you're talking about the suicide prevention plan that's referenced in A.
Is that laid out what the process and procedure is if you have a suicidal student and?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's going to actually come before the board separately.
Okay.
Okay, and then you'll get kind of what I'll call the nuts and bolts of the, how to handle it from when a concern is expressed, all the way through notification of parents and everything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Are we ready to move to a vote? Put it to a vote then? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that carries five zero, thanks.
Okay, so, next one?
Yep.
So we're, policy BEDH, we've discussed that earlier in the meeting. This is up for a second reading and you may want to keep it on for a third, I believe, as well.
Yep.
There's no, there's been no changes, we've kept it the same too.
Yeah, I think, I think this one we were keeping on, I think more just so that the public has a chance to really digest this.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to put it on motion, I should have done that first. So I'll put forward a motion to accept the second reading of policy BEDH, public participation at board meetings. So that's by me, need a second, please?
Second.
Thanks, okay, so that's on the floor now. Does anyone disagree with allowing another cycle here? We go with that, okay. Any questions at all? Okay, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor? Five zero, thanks.
Okay, the next policy we have is JLF, reporting child abuse. And this is a second reading. And the only change we have thus far is we struck out section A in the third paragraph down. So it should read additionally information pertaining to requirements of the first paragraph of this policy. Is it, was there one? Oh, I'm sorry, and we also, you can slightly see this. We added in two commas in the first paragraph, on the bottom line, the first paragraph.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We are good editors.
Good eyes. Well spotted.
Okay, so we'll put a motion, I'll, I'll just keep putting the motions on. So I'll put a motion to amend in the third paragraph by replacing section A with the first paragraph and accept the second reading of policy JLF, reporting child abuse and neglect as amended.
And the, add the two commas.
And add the two commas, as, as amended in our packet, thanks.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions on this one? Okay, if not, let's put it to vote. All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. Okay, we are KEB?
Yes, KEB. This is public complaints about school personnel. And this is a new policy required by law. And this is a first reading.
Okay, make a motion to accept the first reading of policy KEB, public complaints about school personnel. Need a second?
Second.
Okay.
So I guess the one question we. So I guess the one question we have is, it specifically says, any complaint will be referred back to the superintendent. I don't know if we wanna make that more broad in our review of it so that it's not, you know, because there may, you know, be a complaint about the superintendent.
Right, are you saying to the superintendent or designated, something like that?
Or, yeah, or, I think it's worth a conversation when it goes back to the, the committee. And there may be a reason, we may have even talked about that, and there may be a reason that I, I can't remember, but just usually we try to be a little more vague about things like that.
Okay.
Can we talk about that? That's okay, we can the next time.
Yeah, it's a first reading, so.
Yeah, yeah.
First reading, so yeah, I think we can definitely look into that further. And look at the RSA too, the RSA may describe it further about that complaint.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But, but Erin, to your point, I wonder, does the second line of number one cover that? So the superintendent could delegate it to another administrator if it was a?
Yeah, that's true, maybe.
I don't, any thought is about that, but I wonder if that covers what you're?
Yeah.
I think it's just a matter of taking it back to policy and let the committee figure out how they want it done.
Yeah.
So we'll do a second, we'll do a second reading.
For the second? Okay.
Okay. Any other feedback at all? Okay, so that's on the table, on the floor, put it to vote. All those in favor, first reading? Five zero, thank you. Okay, so the next one is DAF.
So DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds. This policy, we were in good standing in January, and as you'll see, that was after page, what is it, twenty, thirteen? So we did a third reading of this in January of 2021. But last summer, there are updates. This is a, this is required by law as it deals with federal grants. So this summer, there was an audit, and there's been some changes since then.
And I just wanna address, because I think, I think Mike had several comments about it. We really appreciate people with expertise in this area, so if you wanna drop an email to, you can send it even to me with your comments, because I know public input in a meeting isn't sufficient amount of time to cover a lot of details. So we, the, the policy committee would be happy to read over. We put things through our legal and, you know, make sure that, so I'm Erin, you could put it to, directly to me or to Dan, he's on the committee too, whatever you think your feedback would be, so that we can get your details and?
And it's also a public meeting too, the, our session, so you could always attend that as well.
Yeah.
So when we have a policy committee meeting, that's open to the public as well to attend, so. I don't think we've established a date yet, so.
We might have it.
But did we, yeah, I think, you're right, we might have, but.
Thanks for noting that, Mike, do appreciate the feedback.
Sorry, I always assume people don't wanna come to dry policy meetings, but thank you for that clarification, Dan. Okay. I'm sorry, I like trying to?
All right, so I'm gonna put it on the floor. So I'll make the motion to accept the first reading of policy DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds. Need a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion around that piece? All right, so we'll have more to come at the policy meeting with some feedback there. All those in favor? All right, five oh for that first reading.
Okay, and then the last one we have is ADB/GBEC. This is Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free Schools. So this policy currently is not up to date. This is a first reading, and our current policy, ADB, we're looking to rescind it, this policy, and replace it. We were audited this past summer, and there were, there were many changes. Hollis was also audited, so we're looking to adopt their policy as it met the requirements in their audit. And this is the, this is the policy from Hollis.
ADB is the Hollis policy?
This is.
The one in the packet?
This is the one, yep.
Okay. Oh, I see, okay. So I'm gonna do one motion and then another, we'll have two on this. So first motion is to accept the first reading of policy ADB slash J, or GBEC, Drug-Free, Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free Schools. Need a second, please?
Second, oh, sorry.
Becky, you got that one?
Nice.
All right, any further discussion on that? We will, the next, my next motion's gonna be to rescind the previous one. This is the new one that we're talking about here. Okay, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor? Five zero, okay, so the follow-up then, I'm making the motion to rescind policy ADB, Drug-Free Workplace. Need a second there?
Second.
Thank you. And any further questions?
Your last motion, you called it ADB/GBEC, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure that that's clear in the, in the minutes.
Yep, thanks.
So it doesn't sound like we made it first reading and then rescinded it.
Right.
Okay.
Four A needs a, a letter.
Yeah, we, we got it.
Okay.
Dan saw that the last time too, it just didn't make it.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, four A.
And we need to add the GBEC to the top too. But that's the last one, that's the last motion we're talking about.
So this is the current Hollis one, yep.
All right.
You okay? Okay, all right, so that motion's on the floor. Put it to vote. All those in favor? All right, five zero, thank you. Okay, we are... Do we need a non-public this evening?
We do not.
We do not, okay, so.
What was I gonna say, our, our next meeting?
Oh, thank you.
Is Monday, November eighth, at three fifteen.
Yeah, afternoon.
Yeah, three fifteen, this morning. Here on CBS.
Uh. Good. And that triggered my thought too around our next meeting. That's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Are we okay to proceed with that? I believe that, if my calendar's right, that's?
Yes. What happens in a vacation month, Hollis is the first Wednesday, Co-op moves up to the second Wednesday, and Brookline takes the third Wednesday.
And we're the third Wednesday.
It's Co-op that changes. And that'll take place again in, in December.
So are we the, we're not the twenty-third then? Did I get that?
Correct.
We're the sixteenth, I guess that would be.
Yeah, whatever the third Wednesday is.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay, so we're the seventeenth. All right, thanks. So the seventeenth, for those listening. Okay, with that, we'll need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second? All right, so all those in favor? It carries five zero, so we're adjourned at seven thirty-eight, thank you.
Thank you.